Good evening, and welcome to the September 11th meeting of the Suffolk School Board. Tonight's meeting will air live on the city's municipal channel and be rebroadcast September 15th through the 21st on the school divisions' channel, Charter 189. The meeting will also be posted on the Suffolk Public Schools website's video library. Highlights of tonight's meeting include a presentation on the division's preliminary state accreditation report, annual reports from the Career and Technical Education and the Special Education Advisory Councils, and information on the first eight days of the new school year. Now to you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. I'd like to call to order the September meeting for the Suffolk City School Board and ask Emily McCown if she would come forward to offer the Pledge of Allegiance.
Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Emily. We have certification of the closed meeting, please.
Resolution of certification of the closed meeting of September 11th, 2014 pursuant to Section 2.2-3712 of the Code of Virginia, 1950 as amended.
So moved.
Second.
Board members will please vote.
Do we have any speakers? Any speakers in the early session? At this time, we don't have any speakers for the early session. Let's go to the reports by the Superintendent, Dr. Whitney.
Thank you, and good evening, everyone. As we do each month, I'm going to call to the podium Ms. Beth Ann Bradshaw to begin our good news report. Ms. Brad? Bradshaw.
Each month, we take this opportunity to share with you and our audience at home some of the excitement that happens in our schools each and every day, both our student achievements and our staff achievements. Tonight's good news report focuses on the school divisions' participation in a summer Sister Cities musical exchange with Suffolk, England. I'd now like to ask teacher Jolene Neighbors to come forward to start the presentation.
Good evening, esteemed members of the School Board and School Administration. I'm Dr. Jolene Neighbors from Nansman River High School, course and theater teacher. There at the school where I have so very proudly served for about 12 years now. I'd like to call up some colleagues of mine, Mr. Edward Woodis, who is also the band director at Nansman River High School, and two students, Mr. Lawrence Smith from Kings Fork High School and Rodney McKeithen Jr. from Nansman River High School. We were all members of a group that was sponsored by Sister Cities International that was the Swing into Suffolk Student Musical Exchange. This was more than just a trip to England. It was truly a venture into citizen diplomacy in which our students, and as educators and then adults from the city, also were citizen diplomats and were able to represent not only our individual schools, but we were representing the city of Suffolk as a whole because we had come from so many different schools, and representing America to Suffolk County, England. So it was a fantastic time, and we're very excited to bring you some information this evening. Before we begin, I'd like those that are able to, that were part of the trip, to please stand, including Sister Cities President Mary Ann Persson. Thank you. We actually had 24 students that went, but now that school has started, everybody has volleyball and games and practices, including my own daughter, who went, who has a volleyball game at Oscar Smith tonight. So guess where I'm going soon as this is done. First of all, our trip was June 16th through the 27th of 2014, and Mr. Woodis and I can attest, we literally closed out the school year with students and immediately got on the bus. That's, you know, we did have a little bit of time there, but it was, we left a lot of things undone. So when we came back, we actually had to go back to work so that we could finish what we had left. We scrambled to get all of our paperwork and everything in right on time. And the students, my gosh, these fantastic students, you can see, this is just before they boarded the bus, so they were incredibly excited going to London, Cambridge, and then ultimately to Barry St. Edmonds, which is the cultural center of Suffolk County, which is in East Anglia of the United Kingdom. The students experienced tours of London and Cambridge, they had an eight-day homestay with Suffolk County students and families, day trips including tours of Orford Castle, Ickworth Country State, and the 13th Century Abbey, which is a centerpiece of Barry St. Edmonds. They trained and performed with the award-winning swing band, worked, learned, and rehearsed in county upper school Barry St. Edmonds, Suffolk County, England. We had concert performances which were sold out. One was an outdoor concert, and one was at the Apex Theater, which I've told many, Suffolk, Virginia needs to get something like this because it is truly a community centerpiece where they, I mean, it's safe, and the students were able to go and perform there. It was sold out, fantastic facility. Oh, my gosh, what a wonderful experience for these kids. So I can't say enough about that. If you can see there, this is my student Rodney singing lead on wagon wheel. Some of you all may know that. We did an interesting mix of pop with swing because we wanted to identify with the music that they did over there, with Jathan Foster on guitar, backed by the Suffolk, Virginia Vocal Group. Fantastic experience, and as you can see, it was quite full there in the audience. Some of the pictures, London, U.K., we actually went there first. The students actually stayed at the Queen Mary University of London, which is on the East End. The East End has really thrived in the last few years, particularly since I was there as a college student, particularly since the Olympics have come in and they've cleaned that part of London up tremendously. But Queen Mary University of London, what a fantastic experience for these Suffolk students to go and stay. So not only are they getting a college experience, but they're also getting a college experience overseas. So it was just something that, you know, they'll never get that again. I mean, what a wonderful, wonderful thing. Few more pictures, Casey Couch, Savannah Miller, and Emily McCown, the tower. And then walking tours. We used to take a lot of walking tours when we were there in London so that they could actually experience it because really and truly, you don't ride anywhere in London, you walk everywhere. And they were exhausted in the evening to prove it. Couple of shots from Cambridge, which is in Cambridgeshire of the United Kingdom. That's actually also a part of East Anglia, which is the sister to Suffolk County. And not a lot of people here realize that Cambridge University is so close to our namesake. Once we arrived in Barry St. Edmonds, we worked and performed within county upper school. County upper school has been something of our sister school for a number of years now. We've actually experienced four exchanges in which my colleague, Mr. Woodis and I, have gotten to go and hosted them in concert at our school, as well as them coming and being in all of the other schools. Barry St. Edmonds County Upper School, there were so many things wonderful about that school, and I guess I, as a teacher, garnered and gleaned so much from them about how to better do things, some things that I saw that we do exceptionally well here, and, you know, how can we exchange as teachers? I got to meet the administration there and go in a couple of times to help our students out because I, you know, I got to teach in their classroom and work there in that experience. Mr. Woodis got to actually direct one-on-one with the band director. It's one of the highest-ranked schools in the United Kingdom. What a fantastic thing for Suffolk, Virginia, to be able to work with one of the highest-ranked schools in the U.K. It's noted for its arts, foreign language, STEM, and more. They really value having focused, concentrated curriculums that if, once they determine after year 10 whether or not they're going to go on to vocational school, they continue on for another three years and they get this concentration that will enable them to be more productive in a collegiate setting. And so it really makes for quite a unique learning experience. A few other pictures, students at Orford Castle, which is there in Suffolk as well, Attleburg by the Sea, the North Sea, I have to tell you, is very interesting there because it's not sand, it's all rocks. It's not rocks, as you would think, it's pebbles. These are a few pictures from around Barry St. Edmonds, just so that you can see, that is the abbey that is there. That's one of the most famous abbeys in all of England. And I'm going to let my colleague, Mr. Woodis, speak about the cultural education and professional development that we experienced. Mr. Woodis.
Good evening, Dr. Whitney, Chairman Debrasky, Honorable School Board Members. The goal this year, different from the other times that we went, was for the instrumental students to actually create the band when we went over there, instead of actually creating a show. Mr. Jenkins, the band director over there, sent eight pieces over. We prepared the band and took over and created the band once we got there. So they actually rehearsed, and a lot of the music, they sight-read and did the performance there, and the result was two fantastic performances that we did, both in Icksworth and at the Apex. During the concert, I made the startling announcement to the audience that Tim Jenkins and I were actually long-lost identical twin brothers. And of course, I'm only kidding, but after observing one another over the years, we reached a conclusion that our styles of teaching were very similar. The U.K., on the U.K. Department of Education website says, "High-quality music education enables lifelong participation and enjoyment of music, as well as underpinning excellent professionalism for those who choose not to pursue a career in music education." On the United States music education, music website, it says, "Music education is almost universally available to students in elementary, middle, and secondary education. Unlike our British counterparts, the curriculum is designed to be taught during the school day here alongside our subjects and instruction." After this visit, light-heartedly, I can agree with the British humor when they say that we're a different culture separated by a common language. But working with Mr. Jenkins, I can affirm that certainly, music is a universal language. And through the training with the Suffolk Sister Cities Ambassador Training, these students definitely use that, use that tool of music, and the ambassador training made totally different students when we returned.
And then we also want to hear from some of our students about the homestay and the cultural impact on student life, which was really one of the most important things. So Lawrence Smith?
Good evening, Dr. Debrasky, School Board Members, Dr. Whitney, and guests. My name is Lawrence Smith, and I am before you this evening to share my experience in England with you. I had the distinguished opportunity to be the only student from Kings Fork High School to travel with the Sister Cities organization to Suffolk, England this past summer. I was fortunate to stay with Peter and the Davies family during my stay. They made me feel as though I had a second home across the world. The Davies family taught me about a few traditional things in England. They informed me about tea time, a small afternoon meal they have with finger food and tea, of course. That was something interesting to me, since we don't actually have that in America. The family also gave me a traditional three-course dinner every night with the entire family. Peter's grandparents, Miss Enid and Mr. Hugh, actually grew all the fruits and vegetables in their own allotment. They even sent a jar of homemade lemon curd with me to take to my family here in Suffolk, Virginia. One of the most memorable parts of visiting Barry St. Edmonds was going to the county upper school. The school was much different from our modern American schools. It had the feel of being on a mini-college campus. The county upper school was different because it was divided into more than one building and had two levels of students. These levels were the upper and lower school, much like middle and high school. The schools in England are sometimes specialized for one thing or put more money into a certain program. Music and the arts is definitely a great part of the county upper schools. My host family allowed me to still have a great time in the midst of all my practicing for the performances. They took Peter and I to several places like the Military Aviation Museum, an amusement park, and on a beautiful nature trail. While we were at these places, I had time to really get to know my host family. I also spent time listening to different types of music with my host family, and I developed a liking for opera. All of these things made my experience with them even more unforgettable. My family in Barry St. Edmonds had a very admirable values as well. The things I noticed they valued most are education, music, and the family itself. They showed me they valued these things because of the time and effort they spend doing things in each of these areas. Because of my experience in England, I see the world differently. I see myself achieving my goals. One day, I'll be an orthopedic surgeon who enjoys playing music. Thank you, Sister Cities, for this opportunity, and thank you to you all for allowing me to share my experience with you all tonight.
And then we also would like for you to hear from Rodney McKeithen.
Good afternoon, esteemed members of the Suffolk School Board. On behalf of the Swing into Suffolk Musical Group Exchange, thank you for having us here this evening. My name is Rodney McKeithen, and I'm a junior at Nansman River High School. In June, I was able to travel across the pond to the United Kingdom and perform with one of the most extraordinary, talented groups of people and musicians that I have ever met. The performers of Barry St. Edmonds County Upper School in Suffolk County are phenomenal. Joining in with them was one of the best and most amazing cultural and musical experiences of my life. I would like to personally thank the City of Suffolk School Board and Administration and the Suffolk City Council for their support of this exchange program. I would also like to thank various representatives of the Suffolk Sister Cities program for their support in making this happen, and the directors, Dr. Neighbors and Mr. Woodis, who put in the work to prepare us countless hours. I would also like to thank Tim Jenkins and many other teachers from the county upper school for their involvement as well. Our principal, Thomas Malkamore, was also incredibly supportive, allowing us to rehearse at Nansman River. Back in January, we all got together for the first time to discuss the trip of a lifetime. The auditioning process was the most nerve-wracking part, as we auditioned with students from all the high schools. Soon after, we started rehearsing and getting to know each other a little better. Two weeks after the trip, Dr. Neighbors increased rehearsals to daily four-hour rehearsals. We had a genuinely good time rehearsing, and we all became a family. Some songs were tougher than others, but we never gave up, and it did not actually sink in that we were about to fly over to another country without our families until we were actually boarding the plane to another country without our families. But we landed at Heathrow International Airport in London and breathed in the London air. We got settled in our dorms at the Queen Mary University of London and explored the city for the next few days. The sights such as Big Ben, Westminster Abbey, and Buckingham Palace were all surreal to me, and I could not believe that I was actually looking at them like with my own eyes. We left London with heavy hearts but good spirits because we were headed to Suffolk, England to meet our host families. During the commute to Suffolk, we stopped at Cambridge University, where we witnessed a bit quieter side of British life. The coolest part of Cambridge was seeing where historic occurrences that I've learned about in school took place. After the meetup, we spent the next week and a half exchanging cultures and making lifelong friends. Personally, my favorite event was traveling to the White Cliffs of Dover with my host family. From the cliffs and castle, you could see France in the horizon. While in England, we rehearsed at the county upper school in Barry St. Edmonds and had two performances. Working with my high school choir teacher in a foreign setting was a great experience. Dr. Neighbors was able to help us become better musicians in such a short amount of time. I was grateful that Dr. Neighbors and Mr. Woodis had been there before because they were able to provide insight on different things that were going on around us. Between the American choir and mixed band, I don't think the British folks knew it came their way. The night of our last performance was also our last night in England. We met new friends in the courtyard at the school and had a few of them come see us perform. It was bittersweet leaving them all behind, but I miss my mom. This trip meant the world to me, and I'd like to thank again everyone that made it happen. Dr. Neighbors always points out to us that we will never get the same moments with the same people ever again, and I would also like to stress that to everyone who went on this trip. While in England, I realized that though American and British cultures are very different, they're also very much the same. This entire experience taught me that you only miss 100% of the shots that you don't take. So if you can, get out there, explore the world, explore yourself, and become who you are really meant to be. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
And I have to tell you, as a teacher, one of the neatest things to see was during the lunch break, they actually would get an hour for lunch, and the kids would go and play. I mean, they had their time, and they were trusted to come back, which they did, but on a couple occasions, they went out and played soccer, football, football. And to watch all of these British students and American students out there playing a common game, it was just so amazing, particularly as an educator, and to see them really get that cultural impact of learning how to get along with other people regardless of where they're from. And then one day, they actually came to me and asked if our kids would come play basketball with them, because basketball is not something that they particularly play a whole lot. So if you want to talk about humorous, I'm going to leave it at that. Needless to say, we won. There's a few other pictures, real quick, to show you some of the pictures from our outdoor concert, which was actually during the midsummer night. That was actually during the summer solstice. I did not realize that in that part of the world, I've never been there at that particular time, it was 11 o'clock at night, and you could still see the sun. And I kept having to look at my watch and going, is that right? But it's equal to Newfoundland, so if you think about it that way. This, again, is some more pictures from our concert, Mr. Woodis directing, and just some of the coming home and with the host families. The top left is actually my daughter with her host sibling, who we're hoping will come back in February, as they're planning to do. She had an unbelievable time. Again, some more with the students and all. And lastly, I just want to point out that Sister Cities provided training and cultural awareness for these students, so they weren't just getting music education, music performance. They were really getting something that impacted them beyond the classroom experience. They got to be in the classroom of the world. And we have to thank Sister Cities for that citizen diplomacy and training. The citizen diplomacy and training is important, and it's a huge part of what Sister Cities stands for and embraces in their educational piece. Again, we were also one performing group. We were not, you know, just the NRHS kids or the NSA kids or the Kings Fork kids are going to perform. We actually came together and were one solid group. So we really represented the city, and that in and of itself is something that's invaluable in terms of teamwork and learning how to work in any environment. The students had to audition, they had to really earn their spot. The students were able to develop the citizen diplomacy starting here because of working together before they ever left home by dealing with students with different backgrounds from all over the city. You can't beat an educational experience like that. In closing, we would like to thank all the various members of the Suffolk Cultural Community for their support and funding of this program. Sister Cities International was a huge part of this. Mary Ann Persson, if you'll please stand. We want to thank you all for that opportunity, and again, if those that are here representing our trip, if you would stand. It is an invaluable asset to the city of Suffolk and to the schools and the students. This is something that they'll never regret having done, and I thank you all for allowing us to go. Thank you to the principals involved. Again, I have to say a special thank you to Mr. Malkamore because he did allow us to rehearse there, and he would shake his head when I'd say, yeah, we're going to be here till 8:30 again. And he'd be like, I don't know why you do, how you do it, but it was wonderful because he was fully supportive. A special thank you to the School Board and Administration for your commitment to this wonderful program and allowing students to go and allowing this continued relationship with Sister Cities. This is more than just this organization and this organization. This is a community relationship that we want to see keep thriving and continuing. We have to thank you all. We want to also thank the City of Suffolk and the City Council for all that they have done to also support this trip and to make sure that it was a city-community and not just these separate entities. So thank you all to the School Board, to the City Council, and to Sister Cities International. And on a personal note, I have to thank these wonderful students who were wonderful to work with, we didn't have any worries. You would, you know, you would think taking 24 students overseas, you would be scrambling and always, you know, those of you that have been teachers having that frantic feeling. They were such young adults and so mature and so wonderful in how they carried themselves. Everybody in this city, and especially you all, the School Board, should be so proud of them, and to the parents who've done a fantastic job with your young men and women. So thank you, thank you for allowing us to represent the city of Suffolk, and thank you for allowing us to represent America in England.
Before I ask the School Board if they'll comment on the program they've seen, I'd like to ask if you would have each student come up, introduce themselves, and tell what school they attend.
And we do have a few that graduated.
That's okay.
So we have some that are already in college, some that are here, so I'm sorry you don't get to meet them all.
Hi, I'm Ryan Basham. I'm, I go to NSA.
Hi, I'm Erin Babler. I recently graduated from NSA.
Great.
Thank you.
My name's Casey Couch, and I am a graduate of Nansman River High School.
Hello, my name's Rebecca McCown, and I recently graduated Nansman River.
Thank you.
My name's Emily McCown, and I still go to Nansman River.
This person, would you like to come forward and speak a few words? Thank you.
I think Dr. Neighbors did a wonderful job of summing up what we did in this experience. I've always said citizen diplomacy begins at home. The motto or the tagline for Sister Cities is connect globally, thrive locally, and this program, as you can see, has certainly allowed these children, these students, to do this, these young men and women. Tim Jenkins said that this was the best exchange he has ever done, and this is a group that does exchanges in Germany, they associate and have exchanges with students in Japan, they've traveled to France, they've traveled to Italy, and he feels that these were the best-prepared, best-representatives, just marvelous student ambassadors. So please be very proud of them, and our organization is just thrilled to be able to provide these opportunities. For those of you watching at home, we do have an Italy exchange also for youth. Applications get from your guidance counselor, starting in January or February, and we look forward to hosting, if possible, the British students when they come in February. But thank you again for allowing us to help train citizen diplomats, because every citizen is a diplomat, even within their own city, and we've been able to broaden that to the world. So thank you.
Thank you. I'd like to ask members of the School Board, make any comments if they wish.
I'd like to make one because I was on City Council when we organized this city, Sister City of England and Suffolk, Suffolk, England and Suffolk, Virginia. And it has grown into this today, and that was...
Long time ago.
Well, I think it was between 78 and 82.
82, okay.
When it was organized, and I'm very pleased to see and to hear what has taken place. At first, it was just citizens going over, exchanging with other citizens of Sister City in England, but now we have students who are in exchanging with each other, and this is very good because then they can understand each other's culture and understand their language and whatever, and it's very fantastic. I'm very pleased to see you here this evening. Thank you.
Ms. Shaw.
Dr. Neighbors, I was in England one year at Christmas time, and I couldn't believe it was dark at 3 o'clock.
See, I did a study abroad over there my junior year, but we were there in the winter into the spring, so I never experienced this.
Did that to you?
Quite a shock.
I have a question. Obviously, when you were there in June, school was still in session. My first question, well, so school was not in session?
These students finished on June 13th, and we left the morning of the 16th.
No, I mean the kids in England.
Yes, they go year-round.
And the other question is, obviously, if they had an hour for lunch, their, the time that they went to school, their day must have been much longer. Do you know what their hours were?
It was nine, roughly nine to four, but during that hour time period, and I've said, and many people that have talked to me since then, I've said, there's a lot of things we can learn from them. There's a lot of things they can learn from us, but one of the things that really impressed me was the fact that their school day did allow for that time period, and they got a lot of energy out. And it was, it was so focused, and when they were done, they were ready to come back to class. No one had to go out and get these students. No one had to blow a whistle or yell or really oversee what they were doing. The PE coaches were out there during the basketball game because they were trying to teach them how to play basketball. But, you know, it was just uncannily responsible.
Yes.
And the students there really embraced the responsibility of their education. And one of the things Mr. Woodis and I have commented on both times that we've been now is that in the mornings, they have a faculty meeting every morning, which I know some teachers would probably not like. However, it was a good centering of, everybody was on the same page for the day. It was only five, 10 minutes long at the most. People got their coffee, announcements were, you know, announcements were made, this is going on today, have a great day at school. And the students were coming in, and we even said, who's watching the kids? Because that's our first impulse, and they were like, what are you, you know, what are you talking about? And they, they don't have to worry about that because the students are coming in and they're going to where they're supposed to be because they're given that measure of, I know that sounds almost unreal over here sometimes, but they're given that measure of trust to come when they're supposed to. But the faculty having that moment of centering and then that hour, huge difference, huge difference in the learning experience.
Very interesting.
It is. It's a very different concept and paradigm with education over there.
Any other board members?
I'd like to commend everyone for their hard work and for representing the city of Suffolk, Virginia, in this trip. I think y'all have done an outstanding job, and I'm looking forward to having the reciprocal students come in and do some stuff with us.
Ms. Byron.
I was going to say, did I?
I was going to say did I. But also, I was going to say, you know, we have a lot of wonderful educators out here that are going above and beyond all the time. This is a prime example, Dr. Neighbors, I know personally, and of course, Mr. Woodis. But I know you do an excellent job. And, you know, this is an example of how our teachers and instructors do such a great job. Our staff is wonderful. I appreciate all you do and all the hours you spend doing this. And the kids, you know, students have done an excellent job. We're so proud of you.
Thank you all for representing us so well from the city of Suffolk. And Mr. Woodis and Dr. Neighbors, we knew you would do it well when you're given a job to do. But we do thank the young people. And, you know, you spoke so well, you know, giving us that revival up. We want to go. I think maybe we can talk to the superintendent and get some money and go and visit all these places also. But it was really nice. Thank you for representing us. Thank you.
Dr. Neighbors, Mr. Woodis, thank you very much for an outstanding job. We really do appreciate it. At this time, we'll take a short break. If anybody would like to be dismissed, they may. We'll be back at 20:00 to continue business. Thank you very much.
Have a good one.
By the superintendent, Dr. Whitney.
Thank you again. As you can see, the second item under the superintendent's report is student membership. This is our eighth day of school. We did have a smooth opening with some challenges with transportation, but a lot less challenges when we compare it to last year. Currently, we have 14,233 students on roll. That's a little lower than last year. But of course, again, it is the eighth day. You should have before you a school, school by school number by grade level as well as the grand total. Next, we have our accreditation report. Ms. Jacqueline Chavis is actually going to present that report. As we shared the information with you last year, as far as our last month, as far as our test scores are concerned, as we had anticipated, we do have more schools that are accredited with the warning and particular content areas. Ms. Chavis will share with you not only where we are now with each of our schools as a division, but also what our next steps are. Mrs. Chavis?
Good evening. And the superintendent mentioned this is a preliminary report because the final information is not due to be released until later in the month. And that's for both the accreditation status of each of our schools as well as the on-time graduation rate that Mr. Doye will be sharing with us this afternoon. Just as a quick reminder, the accreditation is determined two ways, actually three ways, for our high schools. Being that they look at, the state looks at the pass rate, makes some adjustments with different points when students transfer into a school or out of a school during the school year. It is also based on a trailing, it could be based on a three-year trailing average. So if a school does not make it right out, that meet that benchmark through the pass rate the first time or when they take it, the state will then do a three-year average to see if they make it, meet the benchmark that way. And then for high schools, the state looks at the graduation and completion index and the benchmark or the, that's set is 85. And Mr. Doye will speak more to that in a few minutes. Here again is a reminder, as we shared with you last month, the benchmarks for English, it is 75%. And you can see for the other three areas, the benchmark is 70%, grades three through 12. Here's a snapshot of each school. The score that, or the pass rate or the accreditation rate that they met as it relates to the SOL test and then whether or not they are, their accreditation status. The superintendent added a few minutes ago that we had six schools initially. This year, based on preliminary data, we're expecting four more schools to become warned as far as accreditation. And those schools will be, right now, as we look at preliminary data, Booker T. Washington is adding science. They were already warned, but additional area would be science. Hill Point has been added. You can see here for English, the benchmark was 75% and they scored 70 overall in the area of English. Nazaman Parkway, if you look further down on that screen, 72% was their score in English. They had to make 75. For our middle schools, these are the pass rates and the status. Forest Glen Middle School would be the additional school for, at that level. And John F. Kennedy would be the additional middle school. When we look at the high schools, each of our high schools met the benchmark, benchmarks. In particular areas, however, Kings Fork High and Lakeland will remain the warned status. And I apologize, it did not meet the area of math. But Mr. Doye will show in a few minutes the status for graduation rate. So that makes a total of 10 schools. Here is a combined score in each of the four core areas to include. We're combining reading and writing. We'll talk about that in a few minutes at each of the different levels. The highlighted areas are those areas that we improved from the previous year. So you can see for math, in each of those three, at each three levels, elementary, middle, and high, we improved from the previous year. You can see, again, the benchmark for math is 70%. So at elementary and middle school, that was met. When you move over to reading, high school was the one area that we improved from the previous year. 85 then exceeding the state benchmark. Writing, we improved. And then science, we improved at the elementary level. History, you can see, we also improved from the previous year. This gives you a snapshot of each level, elementary, and then we'll look at middle and high school. The red line that you see going across would be the state benchmark. And you'll be able to see where we are, where we are in relation to the benchmark. At the bottom of that graph, you'll see for each of the last three years and the scores. And you'll also be able to note where we increased or where we declined or maintained. And so you can see from this chart, with reading and writing, the scores and where we are in relation to meeting that 75% benchmark. As you can also see from math, history, and science, the benchmark is 70. We exceeded, in some cases, for instance, in math, history, and science, we exceeded the benchmark of 70%. And by how much? This is also shown at the middle level. We continue, as we presented to you, the data last month for reading and writing. That is our greatest area of improvement that will have to happen. However, if you look at the math, history, and science, you can see that we exceeded the state benchmark of 70%. High school is where we saw the greatest gains overall. And in each of those cases, again, except for math, we exceeded the state benchmark. While we did not exceed in math, you can see the growth that occurred in high school when we combined the Algebra I, Geometry and Algebra II. It was about 13 percentage point increase. One thing after we get the data, we start looking at specifics as it relates to each school. Each school will then look at the data as it relates to each teacher and each student. And what we wanted to do, as we shared with you before, look at specifically, was there any improvement in any of the schools in any of the areas? And what this graph shows is, at the elementary level and math, growth that occurred in each of these schools from the previous year. Beginning with Mac Ben Elementary School, fifth grade math students increased or grew by 27 percentage points. And you can see on down to the far right of the graph, Northern Shores, by one point. And so what we use this data for is as principals share best practices. We've already had conversations with them and allowed them to speak with each other about how did you make such gains in these areas with 10 percentage points really being the most significant? It's where it's considered significantly, statistically significant. I'm sorry. I'll get, I'm not going to say that again during this presentation. But, and so you can see here the gains that were made by each school in each of these different areas, from third grade to fifth grade on this screen. This is the middle school screen to show gains of each of our middle schools in math. And then high school. You can see here that Nazaman River High School had the greatest growth in Algebra II. And then the growth at Kings Fork Middle School. Because the middle schools also teach algebra, and that's reflected on this screen as well. For English and reading, while we did not, these are still the greatest areas of growth, we wanted to see if there were any gains from the previous year in each of the schools. And this also gives us the data of what we really need to focus on with the principals and their share with us, what supports we can lend to them. So again, this is the screen for all of the elementary schools. And actually, if you look to the right, we've got middle and high. This is the writing combined, elementary, middle, and high school on one screen here. Booker T. Washington, you can see, increased the most with 21 percentage points. And that takes us to history. Mac Ben, the greatest gains from the previous year. Elementary. Middle. With John F. Kennedy making the greatest gains. And high school. Lakeland High School increased by 14 percentage points. And you can see the other scores here as well. This is science, elementary, with the high schools also, actually, this is elementary, middle, and high combined on one graph. And again, you can see Mac Ben in several places here made tremendous gains, double-digit gains in each case. However, they still are on the warned status. So we'll continue to work with them, providing that support to get them, to get all of our schools to where they need to be as far as reaching the benchmark. Mr. Doye will now share with you the on-time graduation information.
You have on the next few slides, again, graduation information. For the past two years, on this slide, you'll see the number of students graduating just over 1,000 in 2014 in the last column. And of course, you have a five-year range of information on this chart. The combined division on-time graduation was 86%, which is in the last column, with a dropout rate of over 9%. In that dropout data, you do have information containing the unconfirmed student. And what's left with the 86 and the 9% are students that would still be in school to make that 100%. And then as we break out the data, Kings Fork High School, again, we'll speak on the last column. You've seen this information over the years as Mr. Alston had presented it to you. Kings Fork High, the cohort in 2014, 354 students. The on-time graduation, approximately 85%. And then you have your GCI, as mentioned earlier. Just a few comments about those two rows. The on-time graduation would be those that finish school in four years. The GCI, the center row, would include students beyond four years, up to six years, as they complete school. And that row, that GCI, is what's factored into accreditation. So those numbers will be different. Again, the first on time, meaning graduating in four years, as part of that cohort, the GCI would include more than four years. And that number is 87. As mentioned earlier, the mark that is required by the state is 85. So in this, Kings Fork High was at 87, which just a few points beyond the 85. And then you have the dropout information at the bottom of approximately 10%. Lakeland, again, the four-year on-time graduation is approximately 83%. The GCI, which is calculated for the accreditation, again, 86, so above that 85. And the dropout approximately, or just under 12%. And rounding out our high schools, on-time graduation, Nansman River, 92. The GCI of 94. And the dropout, just under 5%.
Our way of action steps are things that we have started doing or will continue to do or will do differently in preparation for this year and making sure that we continue to work with schools to meet those benchmarks and become fully accredited. Our supervisor and specialists have already started looking at and revising the school, the departmental improvement plans. Each of our four areas have an improvement plan that they then will tweak and have been working on to share with the other schools. You've heard us often mention the student performance by question report, and that is by student, how each student performed in each, on each of the tests in each of those core areas. So teachers can look at that information from the previous data. The sending teacher can talk with that receiving teacher to talk about different strategies that we use, things that were effective, things to do differently for this school year. You've heard us talk about MAP data or NWEA. And that data will help schools to identify the gaps in student learning. So the SOWs tell us, here are the end results based on that one assessment. And the MAP tells us, here's what you need to do to get them to where they need to be. Here is the reason why you're seeing the results that you now have. And they've been using, they use that for the first time last year. You heard us also talk about curriculum alignment work that started last year. We had a state consultant who worked closely with us. We've already been informed that we will not have that support this year due to the number of schools that are now going into warned status. And so what we will, with that training that we received last year, we now know how to better align what the teachers are planning, how they plan, how they teach these standards, and then how they then assess those standards to make sure that it is aligned based on the rigor and the intent of those standards. And then we, last year, had the math incentive grant in place for our high schools. This year, we're extending that. The superintendent has given us the opportunity to extend that to middle school students as well as high school and then to also our English, middle school students. And that's an incentive for teachers, monetary incentive. We'll continue with the marked writing test and alignments there for teachers to analyze. The look-alike problems here would be, Mr. Perkins asked us last month about TEI, or Technology Enhanced Items. And making sure that the students are not, not doing well because they don't know how to operate the software or the tool. But it really is a true assessment of what they know. And so our supervisors and specialists will continue to work on those look-alike problems for both technology purposes as well as alignment with the state assessment based on the release items that we received. Continued professional development, monitoring at the school level as well as central office, support staff in schools, aligning resources. And as I mentioned before, sharing effective practices, either principal sharing as well as teachers sharing with each other. Any questions?
Before questions, I would like to say this. Obviously, having more schools accredited with warning isn't a good thing. And it's certainly not something that we're proud or pleased with. But what I am pleased with is to see the growth in those areas that we really concentrated in on, specifically in math. And while in many cases, we still didn't meet the benchmark, we saw the growth. And that's why I think it's important to not only highlight that but to also talk with the school-level principals, meet with them, as well as the individual teachers, to say, "What did you do? What worked? What caused that growth?" We're able to dig deeper than just looking at that cutoff score. We're able to look at, as Ms. Chavis shared, the students' performance by question and to see those areas that students didn't master or did master. And then talk about what strategies were used and continue to use those strategies or to enhance those strategies as well. But that's where we are right now. The actual data will be presented from the State Department on the 16th, I do believe. I don't expect it to be much different from what you have just seen. But we will entertain any questions that you might have at this point.
Questions or comments by school board members? Anybody? I'd like to make a general comment about the test scores. I can't say that I'm pleased with where we are. I certainly hope that we're going to improve each year. But what I would like to see us have before us in the next several meetings is a composite plan by each school principal of the school that has not met accreditation and also what the central office is going to do to help bolster those. Don't want a general plan, I want a school-by-school plan. Does that make sense?
Yes.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
Next on the agenda is the Career and Technical Education Advisory Council's annual report to our school board and to the general republic. Ms. Gail Bess, the coordinator of Career and Technical Education, will be presenting our presenter for that. Ms. Bess.
Dr. Nebraska Chairman, Mr. Copeland Vice Chair, school board members, Dr. Whitney, good evening. I am honored this evening to spend a few minutes to share with you the CTE Advisory Council's annual report of the accomplishments in our career and technical education program referred to as CTE. CTE is the largest instructional program with elective courses in high schools throughout Virginia and Suffolk Public Schools. High school credit courses are offered in 14 of Virginia's career clusters, and the courses are listed in the tri-fold brochure before you. In addition, middle... In addition, middle school exploratory courses are offered in three career areas. The CTE Advisory Council meets monthly to share information on current business trends, technological demands, and workplace requirements. Student events are planned that will foster student growth and help students connect what they learn in school with real-world applications, which are critical when they transition from high school to post-secondary education, military apprenticeship programs, and/or employment, whether full-time or part-time. The membership of the CTE Advisory Council is comprised of a vast array of representatives from businesses and industries to community colleges and retired community representatives who continue to have a vested interest in career and technical education. As you review the strategic plan, you will see that many of our goals are carried out through events that are held for students in grades nine through 12, namely, the Annual Career Expo, the Annual Non-Traditional Extravaganza, and the Annual Student Conference. The dates for these events for this school year have been placed inside your brochure. Save the dates, and we hope you will be able to attend. The first student event is the Professional Student Conference designed specifically for ninth graders. Plans are already underway for the seventh student conference with the theme, "See Your Future: Begin With the End in Mind." The conference is designed to introduce ninth-grade students to the Suffolk and Hampton Roads business community as well as enhance the students' knowledge of expectations in the workplace as they enter high school and begin to identify a career focus. This conference was co-sponsored by State Farm Insurance and the Hilton Garden Inn Suffolk Riverfront. The second student event is the Non-Traditional Extravaganza, designed for 10th and 11th graders. The focus of this career event is to encourage students to think outside of the box and not feel locked into a career because of gender and/or ethnicity. Students have the opportunity to interact in small settings with employees and non-traditional careers. Student participation increased by approximately 90 students in comparison to the previous school year. For example, females are non-traditional in the agriculture, food, and natural resources industry. Pitchard is a female farmer, sharing her experiences as well as skill sets needed to be successful in the industry with a group of female students. The third event planned by the CTE Advisory Council is the Annual Career Expo, which is now in its 24th year. Students sharpen their interview skills through mock interviews with representatives from business and industry. Even though employment is not the goal of the event, students have reported that they are offered similar jobs as well as second interviews. To conclude the school year, the CTE Advisory Council recognizes teacher and student excellence. Shamad Earls, a 2014 graduate of Lakeland High School, was selected as the CTE Student of the Year. Shamad was active in the Agriculture Program at Lakeland High School, and he is now attending Virginia State University. State Farm Insurance co-sponsored this award with a monetary gift to the student. We were proud to recognize Mrs. Tanya Spruill, Business and Information Technology Teacher at John Yates Middle School, as the outstanding new CTE Teacher of the Year. Mrs. Spruill joined our team in 2012. We were also proud to recognize Mrs. Lisa Quinn, Marketing Teacher at Kings Fork High School, as the outstanding CTE Teacher of the Year. Mrs. Quinn joined our CTE team in 2010. In addition to the student events and recognition of student and teacher excellence, students also have opportunities to certify in specific skill sets based on industry and business standards by passing one or more industry certification exams. An industry certification is an approved Virginia Department of Education Industry Examination or a state licensure or occupational competency assessment that is based on, solely on, business and industry standards and achieved by students. Last year, students earned a total of 1,637 industry credentials. That's 608 more credentials than they did the previous school year, with 82 percent of those students earning more than one credential. This evening, as a part of the Advisory Council's report, we wish to recognize our students and teachers who competed at the national level in their respective CTE student organizations. First, we congratulate John Yates Middle School and Enya Gibson, Shamaka Newalenza, and Raluka Rilla, who competed at the state level and advanced to the national level.
Ms. Bess, are these students here?
Yes.
Can we bring them forward? Are they going to wait?
Would you come forward? Raluka and Enya, right? Raluka, right here.
Good evening.
She competed among 58 students in the digital photography competitive event and was a top-10 finisher by placing eighth in the competition. She also competed among 90 students in electrical applications, where she also finished in the top-10 by placing eighth in the competition. And Enya also competed, what was your event?
Video game design.
Video game design. Congratulations to these students and their advisor, Mr. Christmas, if he was standing at this time, and Principal, Mr. O'Leary. We thank you and we congratulate you. Nancema River's Family, Careers, and Community Leaders of America members continued their competitive spirit at the National Leadership Conference. The five students from the Nancema River FCC LA Student Organization was among over 4,200 participants. This was the largest number of competitors at any national events competition. Courtney Matthews and Lauren Snow, both juniors at Nancema River High School, competed in the entrepreneurship event. Their project focused on the creation of a cupcake business from the beginning to completion. They earned silver medals, and I should have them come forward at this time. Courtney and Lauren. Also coming forward is Alexandria Beamer. Alexandria competed in the Recycle/Redesign Event. Her focus was the creation of new items from old items. She made pet beds, mittens, a vest, and two handbags from several recycled wool sweaters and jackets. She also won a silver medal for her efforts. And also, Haley Maxwell and Elise Kemp competed in the new event of Sports Nutrition, and they were graduating seniors, I believe they've gone to college now, they're in school. They developed a balanced, healthy meal and hydration plan for a volleyball player. They earned bronze medals in their event. In addition to the student winners, the Nancema River High School's student body received a runner-up award in the National Student Body Program. This is a peer education program focused on helping young people to learn to eat right, be fit, and make healthy choices. Congratulations, students and their advisors are here tonight. Mrs. Sally Karadema. If you were standing, Mrs. Deborah Kriemer. Thank you so much. In closing, I extend a heartfelt thanks to the members of the CTE Advisory Council. You work hard and you give so much of your time to partner with Suffolk Public Schools and specifically the CTE program. I especially would like to thank Dr. Harriet Arrington for her leadership in the role of Vice Chairman for two years and as Chairman for two years. At this time, I would like to ask the members of the CTE Advisory Council who are present if they were standing this evening. Thank you so very much.
Could you announce them? Could you announce who they are, please?
Sure, I will. If you will remain standing. Mrs. Karen Bazemore, who represents Suffolk Public Schools. She's the CTE Assessment Specialist. We have Mrs. Sharon Harris. She is a retired business owner. Mrs. Nanoshika Harris. She is our parent representative. And of course, Mr. Perkins, representing Tidewater Community College and the Suffolk School Board. Thank you. Any questions?
Ms. Bess, thank you for your job. Well done. Your efforts are easy to see right here. Thank you for everything you've done for us in Suffolk City Schools.
You're certainly welcome. Thank you.
Yes, applause, please. We do have one other annual report. The SEAC Committee will now be doing their annual report. Mr. Doctor Antoine Hickman will be doing the introduction. Thank you.
Good evening. I have the privilege of introducing someone who's not a stranger to the board. Ms. Vivian Evatt, current Special Education Advisory Committee, officially known as the SEAC Committee Chairperson, joined as a voting member in 2003. And since 2003, she's served in the role of either Vice Chair or Chair for more than 10 times. So she's been around, I didn't mean it like that. But she's been, she's been with us and been supporting our program for a number of years. When asked the question of why are you still involved with SEAC after all this time, she said that she loves to help inform parents of their rights and to help them be advocates for students. She likes for parents to know how to advocate for their child and other students with special needs. She likes to stay informed of changes in our system and help us to identify unmet needs for our students with disabilities. And she enjoys working overall to help this district and the Special Education Department be the best department in the area. We talked about the offices she's held, but some of her most memorable occasions, one that she speaks highly of, is working with SEAC and helping parents to just recognize the importance of advocating for their children, the importance of knowing the laws and the regulations pertaining to special education, and helping see the positive outcomes for their students. One or two things that she's very proud of is her work with our team and our committee on developing a disability harassment policy and the work that goes into that, as well as the physical restraint and seclusion policies. She is a member of the Key Communicators, a member of PTA, PTSA, the Disabilities Awareness Committee, and she often volunteers at schools. So she's one of the hardest workers, not employed by Suffolk Public Schools, but she does do a great job of keeping and supporting us. So without further ado, she will share last year's annual report.
I need to apologize first. I have a tooth infection, so I've taken Vicodin, so I'll try to stay one of what I've written. But just for plausible deniability, I'm putting it out there. Good evening. My name is Vivian Evatt. I am the parent of two students in Suffolk Public Schools, and I was the chairperson for the 2013-14 Suffolk Special Education Advisory Committee. As you know, our committee is mandated by the state of Virginia to advise Suffolk Public Schools of needs in the education of children with disabilities, to participate in the development of priorities and strategies for meeting those needs, to submit reports and recommendations regarding special education services, to assist in interpreting plans to the community, to review policies and procedures for special ed services, and to review the Suffolk Public Schools' annual plan. Our committee membership includes community service providers and other stakeholders, but the majority of our voting members are parents of students currently receiving special ed services in our division. We have one teacher serving as a voting member and consultants from the Special Ed Department, including the director and supervisors, as well as members of the school board. The committee meets in regular sessions six times a year. Subcommittees meet as necessary. Meetings are open to the public. Special meetings may be called to address specific issues. Time is allotted during each regular session for public comment. All scheduled meetings of the committee during 2013-14 were held in the evenings at Kings Fork Middle School. During this school year, the committee expressed concerns with Suffolk Public Schools' proposed 2014-15 budget. A special meeting was called to address these concerns in February. The committee was concerned with the continued loss of crucial supports in teaching and transportation staff. The continued loss of highly qualified teachers, transition specialists, compliance specialists, assistive technology technician, and data specialist greatly impacts the ability of our system to provide quality educational supports for students receiving special education services. These services help students to prepare for life after high school as contributing members of society. Without these supports, these students will be unprepared for an independent life and will need to access additional supports as adults. Suffolk's inability to provide commensurate pay for highly qualified teachers has created a dangerous precedence in our system. With non-competitive salary and benefit packages, we are losing experienced, knowledgeable teachers to other local districts at an alarming rate. According to testing results in reading and mathematics, Suffolk Public Schools already struggles to meet annual measurable objectives. With the continued loss of highly qualified teachers, these areas will only get worse. In addition to the detriment to our rising citizens, we must also consider the federally mandated ramifications of failing schools. We have lost special education bus monitors. These positions are important to maintain the safe transportation of students with special needs and often fragile health conditions. A bus driver cannot focus on safely maneuvering the school bus while overseeing the care of multiple students with various medical issues and individual care needs. Without bus monitors, students with disabilities who are transported by bus are at an increased risk to their safety. In order to provide safe transportation of students with special needs, special education bus monitors are a necessity. As you know, a public comment was presented to the school board in March. The committee will continue to monitor the budget and its impact on special education. With the recent retirement of Deborah Bagley, Parent Resource Center facilitator, SEAC is concerned with the continuity of special education resources for parents, students, and other stakeholders previously provided by the PRC. It is the recommendation of this committee that the PRC continues in its efforts to support those struggling with understanding the myriad nuances of special education. We further recommend that the new facilitator be a stakeholder in the process as well. It is the experience of this committee that the facilitator will need a certain understanding of the issues affecting individuals who access this resource. This recommendation is also supported in the regulations governing special education programs for children with disabilities in Virginia. These regulations state that a majority of the membership of local advisory committees shall be parents of children with disabilities or individuals with disabilities. The Special Education Parent Resource Center should be likewise supported. The Disability Awareness Subcommittee has a longstanding responsibility to assist Suffolk Public Schools in conducting public disability awareness training and developing and implementing disability awareness activities in schools, especially during Disability History and Awareness Month for Virginia Public Schools designated in October. The Subcommittee usually meets twice a year to discuss planned activities. A meeting at the end of the year is conducted to evaluate the effectiveness of those activities. Lead teachers from each school serve as disability awareness contacts. The Disability Awareness Subcommittee is also tasked with raising public awareness of SEAC. Committee members attended PTA meetings, Parent Resource Center events, school board meetings, and Suffolk City Council meetings to provide opportunities to discuss SEAC and its functions. The Disability Harassment Policy Subcommittee continued to review representation of this policy in student and staff manuals. Previous manuals have contained errors within these sections. The Subcommittee will continue to monitor these sections of the manuals each year for action if necessary. The Technology Subcommittee continued to monitor issues with the IEP software and provide recommendations for improvement. The Subcommittee also provided recommendations to improve special education web pages and continues to provide input on the website. The Transitioning Subcommittee was tasked with monitoring secondary transition services for public education. for possible issues needing action from the committee. As the transition specialist positions were eliminated due to budget constraints, monitoring transition services continues to be a key concern for CAC. The Subcommittee was also given the goal to recommend improvements to orientation programs for students receiving special ed services. The Subcommittee provided recommendations to the system to improve communication between parents, current school, and intended school in order to promote a smooth transition for the student. The committee received five public comments during the preceding year. These comments included issues involving the special ed website, care of students with special needs in school and during transportation, and the student-to-teacher ratio of special education classes. During the May meeting, a public comment was brought to CAC concerning the assault of a student by a bus monitor on a special education bus earlier last school year. The Transportation Subcommittee was tasked with studying the rate of incidents on special education buses, determining the requirements for employment on a special education bus, examining training provided for the staff, and the impact of the staggered bus schedule. This Subcommittee is currently in the process of this study in collaboration with the Special Education Department. The committee will continue to provide a public forum to address the needs of its stakeholders. The Data and Assessment Subcommittee continues to assess No Child Left Behind Annual Measurable Objectives and their impact on the special education population. As previously mentioned, our school system continues to struggle to meet these goals. The Subcommittee also monitors the effect of No Child Left Behind using graduation and exit data on students completing their educational programs. This Subcommittee's goals will continue. The committee welcomed Steve Edwards, Suffolk Supervisor of Research and Testing, to the November meeting to discuss Virginia Alternate Assessment Program and Virginia Grade Level Assessment Data. The phasing out of the VGLA and the elimination of the Modified Diploma were also discussed. Our committee nominated new members at our July meeting. Shamika Council Teacher, Caitlin Espinoza, Parks and Rec, Sharon Harris, Grandparent, and Therese Colongo, Parent. I have been nominated to continue to serve as Chairperson this year. Leslie Schiefer will continue to serve as Vice Chairperson. Nikelle Baker, Ann Dunn, Saul Godinez, I want to hear on that one. Regina Hall and Glenna Harper will continue to serve as voting members for the new year. Due to term limits within the bylaws, Louis Bagley and Holly Boyce will be unable to serve this year. Cynthia Gregory, Opal McLeod, and Amy Van are stepping down from the committee due to other commitments. Lynn Stockman will be unable to serve as voting member in the coming year due to inability to meet attendance requirements. CAC will establish annual goals at the upcoming meeting. Those goals will be presented to the school board for approval. The committee will continue to monitor the elimination of the Modified Standard Diploma, Transitioning Concerns, Transportation Issues, Disability Awareness, Dropout Rates, Inclusion, Disability Harassment, Physical Restraint and Seclusion Guidelines, Diploma Status, and Special Education Parent Resources. No Child Left Behind Annual Measurable Objectives, the Virginia Modified Achievement Standard Test, and the Virginia Alternate Assessment Program are also issues of ongoing review. In closing, I would like to reiterate the importance of working toward a solution to keep our highly qualified teachers and provide a budget which better meets the needs of our students. The losses we've experienced over the last several years cannot continue. Our most vulnerable population suffers greatly from these losses. Please work with city council to help them realize the importance of providing much-needed supports for our students. Please impress upon them the fact that these supports will lessen the amount of city funds needed to support adults with special needs who have been inadequately prepared to become contributing members of society. We would like to thank the board for assigning the committee liaisons who take an active interest in improving special education services. Ms. Bouchard and formerly Ms. Foster, thank you for advising our committee on the board's position during our many deep and often passionate discussions. We appreciate your ready availability to attend our meetings and address our many questions and concerns. Mr. Parkinson, we welcome you to our committee this year and look forward to initiating you into the group. We'll try to be gentle.
Thank you.
Thank you to Dr. Whitney for your continued support of our committee. Your hard work on behalf of our school system during these challenging years is greatly appreciated. Thank you, Dr. Hickman. Where'd you go? There you go. Ms. Masters, Ms. Rusnick, and Ms. Glover, also known as Dr. H.'s Angels, for your invaluable assistance with our committee. We appreciate the collaboration of the Special Education Administration in working with our committee to improve special education in Suffolk. We look forward to continuing this open team environment in the coming year. I would like to thank our committee members. Anybody here? Sharon? Okay, nobody's there. For all their hard work and perseverance in striving to meet the needs of our students receiving special education services in Suffolk. I appreciate your time and the commitment you bring to our committee to help improve our system. Finally, I would like to thank Deborah and Louis Bagley, personally and on behalf of the committee, for so many years of support and wisdom and compassion. Sorry. The Bagleys have been working hard to promote acceptance and understanding of people with disabilities in Suffolk Public Schools for the last 20 years. Their devotion to this cause should be commended by the school board. This division lost an incredible resource when they retired. Thank you. Any questions?
Thank you. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Can we recognize the Bagleys?
Absolutely. You mean at another meeting?
Yes.
Certainly. I think that's well.
I think it's well taken, too.
Yes, we'll do that. Also, I'd like to thank Mrs. Everett, as well as other committee members and the Special Ed Department. They work very hard to make certain that we stay on track and also make certain that we do what needs to be done to make sure that our special population is included in as much as possible and also their needs are being met as well.
And I would like to point out that Ms. Evatt is an impressive Chairperson and also is very, very thorough. And that's why I plan to continue to visit these meetings so that you don't beat up on Mr. Parkinson. Thank you very much, Vivian.
The last item on, I'm sorry.
I just wanted to say that when I was Reginald School Board, I did serve on this committee for several years.
So you can take care of these.
So maybe the break-in period won't be quite as long as it needs, as you're thinking.
The last item on the superintendent's report is the Calendar of Special Events. On page 44, you'll see that there are a number of events, different special months, as far as Disability Awareness Month in October, National Principals Month October also. Our students will be performing at the Suffolk Peanut Fest, as they do annually, during October 9th through the 12th. We also have National School Lunch Week, Grandparents Week, October 13th through the 17th, National School Bus Safety, and Bus Driver and Aid Appreciation Day, October 22nd. That concludes the superintendent's report. Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Dr. Whitney. Board members, as you look at the consent agenda for the next minute or so and see if any items need to be taken out and placed in unfinished business, please. Or new business. Here, ma'am, can I get a motion to?
I move for the adoption of the consent agenda.
I'll second that.
Board members, will please vote.
We've got unfinished business, and unfinished business, we have new business. Dr. Whitney, can you tell us about the opening of Pioneer and Dedication?
Yes. Pioneer opening was a very smooth opening. In fact, one of our smoothies, as far as since I've been in the school system for over 15 years now. Staff was very eager, excited to be there. Parents were excited to be there, as well as the students. We do have some parking issues that we are addressing, as far as hopefully having more parking spaces for visiting parents or other guests. We do need to schedule a dedication ceremony. Traditionally, that has been done on a Sunday afternoon. I would like to suggest that we look at the dates in November. I have three dates in mind. November 2nd, 9th, or 16th, which is Sunday. And again, traditionally, that has taken place at around 3:00.
You want us to pick one out?
Yes.
I'd vote to look at November 9th if everybody's, second. Everybody okay with November 9th, Sunday, November 9th? Yes?
As far as I know.
Can we have a motion?
I move that we accept. What time?
About what time?
3:00 is my recommendation.
3:00. Okay, that's good.
Okay. That's my busy day, but that's okay. I'll be out at 3:00. I move that we will accept November 9th as the date for.
Dedication.
Dedication of Pioneer Elementary School.
Second, please.
Second.
Thank you.
Board members, will please vote. Motion carried.
Public speakers that are, would like to speak on non-agenda items. Do we have any public speakers out there that would like to come up and give us their two cents worth? Or three cents worth? Or down? Quarter? Going once? Going twice? Okay. All right, let's go to business by board members. Let's start with Ms. Skeeter.
Don't have any business tonight. Thank you.
I'd just like to say that we do have, we have two standard, we have two types of diplomas, the standard and the advanced. That's what we're going to. And does anyone have any idea of how many students that we have that graduate with a standard diploma?
I don't have those numbers before me, but we can certainly get those to you.
And the reason I'm saying that is I'm working with some other school systems in my daytime job right now. And we're setting up other options for them rather than getting the House Bill 1184, when we're doing the two-year degree as an option, which we're working with Polycamp on this now. So I'd like to see the possibility of expanding some options with Polycamp or whomever so that we can offer maybe some career studies options in that, that might be more of a technical operating, a technical type approach.
Right.
So that the students that are on the standard diploma would have more industry credentials when they graduate and they'd be more employable.
Okay.
Because many of our students that do get the standard diploma may or may not go to some post-secondary training. So I'd like for them to be as prepared as they can for the next step in their life.
Okay. We can certainly do that. One of the things I'll also note, on November 1st, we actually will have a college and career readiness fair, which will highlight some of the opportunities that we offer here in our school division, but also helping prepare students for either college or different careers as well. But we certainly can look into doing just that, and we will have that information as far as the number of standard diplomas versus advanced diplomas.
Okay. Ms. Byron?
Yes. A couple of comments. Many of us attended the new teacher breakfast back a few weeks ago, and we do have a lot of new people on staff, a lot of people switching and so forth, transferring from one school to the other. And I just want to wish all of those people much success in our school system. I hope they will like us so much that they will continue to stay with us and learn from us and share what they know already and bring in some new ideas and help us in many ways. Another comment, Pioneer, as Dr. Whitney said, the opening is great, there's little traffic problem there sometimes, but it's a wonderful school. Dr. Belton and Dr. Phillips are doing a great job. I think the students are very energetic when I've been out there, and you know, the parents seem to be just overwhelmed. And you know, I think we've done a great job, and I want to thank all of those teachers and the staff there and our staff here at Suffolk Public Schools for helping make that transition as smoothly as possible and make for a very wonderful opening of a new school. We have a lot to be proud of there.
Opening a school, especially with new teachers. Ms. Bouchard?
I only want to add to what Ms. Byron said regarding our new teachers. I certainly hope that this year that we will have a better way to support these new people and the ones that we already are so appreciative of. I hope that we'll be able to show our appreciation in a more sincere way, like more money, hopefully. I hope this will be better for, I hope this will be a better year than it has been in the past seven. I don't have any concrete evidence of that yet.
Mr. Copeland.
Thank you. Dr. Bransky, I visited Pioneer on several occasions, and I met Dr. Belton, and she seemed to be in, she was Assistant Principal, coming in from Northern Shores, I think, Elementary School.
Yes.
And the teachers were outstanding. They were working. And this was prior to the opening of school. And they had boxes all up in the halls, and everybody was really working. And I returned the day of the opening of school, and you wouldn't have known that these boxes were there. Preschool, everything was organized, the teachers had everything up in their classrooms, and they were really on the ball, as far as I was concerned. And also visited Kew, the Shores, and Forest Glen. The school's in the Holonick Borough, to be honest with you. I didn't go outside of the borough that day. I just stayed within the borough. And everything was working quite well, and I attended a couple of football games. Lakeland, Norcom, the first game, and we weren't successful, but the second game, we worked. Played Great Bridge, and we were victorious over Great Bridge. And so the boys were high and energetic, and everything seemed to be in place for Mr. Wagner. So I hope him good luck for this year. We won one last year. I don't know how many we'll win this year. But anyway, we are off and running. Mr. Chair?
Thank you, Mr. Copeland. I'd like to make one concern, have the superintendent look into it. As you're already aware, we have fewer bus issues this year than we've ever had before in the last several years, but we have one that needs to be attended to, and that's at Creekside Elementary. We had, I don't know if it's several buses or one, that is continually late and over an hour late picking up and dropping off. I think you have that email, if you'd look into it and address it, I'd appreciate it.
I certainly will. As I have shared before, the challenge really is transportation challenges as far as buses arriving to the school and at the designated time to take students home in a timely manner. We did start this year better with bus drivers. We're still short 16 drivers, but we are pleased that nine applicants will go into training on Monday. They should, six of those applicants should finish perhaps by the end of the month, three of them within the end of next week because they already have the CDL. They definitely, some of those will be assigned to Creekside. We will also be looking at all of the schools to see where late arrivals are taking place or late departures. We will have to have some double runs. That was something that we didn't want to have this year, but obviously, without having the number of drivers, we will need to have some double runs as well as training and still trying to recruit new drivers. I will say this, however, that the 140-some drivers that we do have have done an outstanding job up to this point. And I say that we've been in school eight days, but as I look at the attendance rate has been very good. We have some out on leave. Obviously, things happen, but anywhere from only one being absent to perfect attendance during those eight days, some days maybe four absent for various reasons. I appreciate their efforts and will continue to look at this. I personally look at the sign-in and sign-out sheet as far as drivers, when they arrive and when they leave, on a weekly basis. It is going to be addressed as best we can, as far as putting drivers in place, making the double runs, in some cases perhaps moving students that makes sense to a different bus with plenty of notice to the parents. It is an issue that we're not pleased with, but again, an issue that we're going to continuously be addressing and reviewing as well.
Can you contact this parent?
I already have.
Oh, you have? Thank you very much. Okay, any other business for the good of the cause at this time?
I would like to say one other thing, if I may. We talked about Pioneer's great opening, but I pride myself in visiting all of our schools within the first two days of the school year. I put a lot of steps on my pedometer, by the way, doing that. But it was a very smooth opening, division-wide. Seeing teachers engaged and students engaged that first day is very impressive. What it said- What it says to me is that they recognize, students and teachers, what needs to take place. It's almost as though we didn't have a break. We see people back in action, doing what they need to do as far as teaching and learning. And I just want to thank our teaching staff, our entire staff, for putting things in place and getting back to business. I want to share that with the group as well.
Thank you. We will go to, who's this from the? Yeah, personnel report.
Mr. Chair, I move that the personnel report would be adopted.
Board members will please vote. Motion carried.
Mr. Chair, I move that the pupil personnel report would be adopted.
If board members will please vote. Motion carried.
Before adjourned, I'd also like to thank all the employees, from bus drivers, cafeteria workers, through teachers and administrators for an outstanding starting of schools. And I will say that this board is committed to looking for more ways to fund its personnel, especially its teachers, but everybody else with that. Thank you for our job you've done. You've done a great job opening the school. I know it's been kind of drastic at times, but we thank you for the effort and continued prosperity. That will adjourn.
I think someone had the hand up there.
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Chairman, is there an opportunity for an announcement to be made for the community?
Okay.
May I come up and make?
Good evening, Mr. Chairman and honorable members of the Suffolk School Board. My name is Costella Ledbetter, and I am presently serving as the president of the National Advancement for the Association of Colored People, the local branch here in Suffolk. I'm here to inform the public in this board that we are having a community-wide call to action on Sunday, September 14th, from 2:00 to 5:00 p.m. We're partnering with Parks and Rec to get free valid photo IDs for those persons who need them. As you know, the law changed in July, July 1st, the law changed. And many of our voters, especially some of our older voters who are now seniors, they are no longer driving, and many of them do not have the valid photo ID that they will be in need of to vote. The registrar will be on-site to take the pictures of those persons who are in need of getting a valid photo ID. And this will be at the Rec Center on Sunday, September 14th, from 2:00 to 5:00, 138 South Sixth Street. You can take your photo there at no charge. It will not cost one red penny. Persons who need to register to vote can also do that. The last day to register to vote is October 14th. So those young people who will be 18 by November 4th can register at that time. Any person who needs an absentee ballot application will also be able to acquire that on-site. Any person who has moved since the last voting period can get a new voter registration card. So all of these things will be available to those persons in our communities who need those criteria in order that they may vote. We are not here to tell or will not be there to tell anyone how to vote because we are nonpartisan. We are just trying to make sure that people are ready and able to vote at the appropriate time for the person of their choice.
Thank you.
Thank you, and hopefully you will pass this word on. I do have a couple of, so many of the churches and the schools, I had permission to take these to the schools, so they are at schools for parents and others to pick up.
Thank you.
Okay? So pass the word on, please, it's important because this is a very crucial election coming up this year.
Thank you, ma'am. Meeting adjourned.